The time is seven oh one, bring this planning board meeting to order. We will have, just for the, who's ever watching, we will only have four members this evening. Until Mr. Delaney might be able to join us at a later date, later time. The agenda is for September eleventh, twenty twenty one, is ready to go. Call the meeting to order and first item on the agenda, approve the minutes of December twenty first, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as provided.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion on the table say aye.
Aye.
Pose the eyes out, Mr. Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Mr. Fattalia.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
So they both aye. Next item on the agenda, committee reports administrative actions. Town planners report, any committees, any board members have anything to report?
No, all set, Mr. Chairman.
All set, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Town planners report, this is beginning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I can answer any questions from the board. I do have an update for seven twenty five Main Street. I heard from the property owner and he's wasn't aware of the snow problem, so he's going to have his plow guy use the snow storage location.
Okay.
Yes, well, I have a question on one fifty Main Street. Are we all set there? Have they completed work down there? And, you know.
In terms of the project?
Yes. So there should not be any parking back there?
Um, my understanding is the construction is over and there should no longer be construction allowed on the street. What's going to happen is Steve Sadwick is going to reach out to the police fire and town engineer to get guidance on that from them on the street parking. So I hope to report back when I can, once that has happened.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Next item on the agenda, thirty East Street, concept plan review. Who's presenting this this evening?
Good evening. Can the member of the board hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dennis Grecci. I'm an engineer with Andover Consultants with an office at one East River Place in Methuen. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant Carolina property for the concept plan that was submitted for the project at thirty East Street. And if I may, with the permission from the board, share my screen to bring you through a few slides we put together.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. One moment. Alright, so is everyone seeing the the screen before you?
Not yet.
Let's try that again.
Okay.
Through now?
Yes.
Okay. So concept plan was submitted for the parcel thirty East Street to propose mixed use, a commercial and residential project. It is located within a town center overlay district. See, that's the purple dashed area here. The parcel is number thirty East Street, just off of North Street. The next slide here, so this is a perspective street view of the existing house. The existing three family dwelling as it sits today. Another perspective view from a different angle. Again, there's two driveway curb cuts. The plan that was submitted, the concept plan that was submitted to the board. Again, this is the existing dwelling, existing curb cut here and here. It's the dirt driveway, the concrete pad. What's being proposed is a four unit residential use. Again, this would be a mixed use, there'd be a commercial or office space in the rear of the property. These townhouse style units would each have a driveway underneath, so be parking beneath each unit for one space. Also provided eight additional surface spaces, including an accessible space closer to the office. We have a rendering of a landscaping perspective. So again, thirty East Street as it exists today here. What's being proposed driveway, parking for the office space, parking for the residential space and also the four unit townhouse with the sidewalk connecting to the street. The general style that's been discussed at this point with the applicant to comply with the standards, a very residential colonial looking house in the front, which would be this perspective here. Again, with the driveway along the side and and parking beneath each unit. And if the board members had, so I have some also some pictures of the building as it stands today. So this is a perspective of the back of the house. The house is in relatively rough shape. There is, this is the deck system. So these are the decks here that we're looking at from this perspective here. This is that second curb cut. Again, looking. This is standing here looking towards East Street, so that second curb cut there. This is standing in the back of the lot, looking out towards East Street in the back of the house. So again, it's rather overgrown in the backyard. This would all be supposed to be cleaned up and landscaped. And again, this is looking out towards East Street to the existing driveway. If the if the board has any questions or comments about the concept plan that was submitted, we'd be happy to answer those questions.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be honest, I'm still trying to wrap my head around squeezing these units in there. And with the traffic, with the new proposed set town center traffic improvements. Also a bit concerned about having, we're having the residential out front and the proposed office space out back. So it also a concern you have, how many, eight spots out back, one handicap and eight spots?
No, we are correct. There there are eight, eight total spaces, including one accessible parking space.
Okay, so and then one parking space underneath each unit?
Correct.
Okay, so if each unit have two spots and they're full and you're limiting your number of spaces for the proposed office space, do you have an intended use for this office space?
At this point, professional office is what's been discussed. So we did include the parking summary chart to the professional office spaces, six hundred square feet, one space for three hundred. So two spaces required per zoning. Multi-family, we have the four units with two spaces per unit, so eight spaces required. So a total of ten. Excuse me, we provided the the twelve spaces.
Okay, twelve providing the four underneath the as part of the unit, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have for right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I had the same question as Mr. Ryder about the reasoning for the residential in the front and not the commercial. Is there, is there a particular reason?
No, just to separate the the professional office space from the residential, we did, we do have a concept which I can share with the board this evening that was not submitted, which included the commercial office space in the front. So I can pull that up if the board would like. Basically, it's pushing the building back, the four unit residential building back sixteen feet and including a sixteen foot deep professional office space here, and that would remove the need for the for the office in the rear. I think it was just the.
In your concept, you know, does that help or hurt parking in any way?
The parking would be the same.
Okay.
As the as the lot kind of tapers down in the back here, we don't have an opportunity to provide any more parking in the back. So the parking is is going to be the same in that concept as well.
I mean, if it if it's six of one half dozen the other, I think I'd probably lean towards the version where you have the commercial in front and the residential in back. If it doesn't really have any real effect on anything, you know what I mean? It just, it's the setup kind of fits more, the setup or typical similar projects in town. And that way you avoid the need to have the commercial visitors, whoever they are, going all the way through the whole development. You kind of keep them to the front, they're in, they're out. And they don't really, you know, they don't really bother the residential folks at all. So like I said, if it's if it's six of one half dozen the other, I'd probably lean towards the version that has the commercial out front. And then the one thing I'd say is obviously, when you bring the commercial out front, not that we won't be interested in how the residential buildings look, but now it's the commercial building that you need to make sure that the design looks like, you know, fits the down, you know, the town center area, that kind of thing. Just, you know, just as a heads up. And then the units, how many bedrooms are these units meant to be?
I don't know if the the scheme has been developed that far at this point.
I only ask that because I don't know if that would go at all towards, you know, Mr. Ryder's question, meaning, you know, the two bedroom. You know, how that how that affects the cause versus, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know if it makes much of it, but it's just, if there is an idea as to where it's going, it's worth knowing, I suppose. But otherwise, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chip.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Fattalia. Mr. Fattalia.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, here I am. I had some similar concerns as far as my board members, as far as access to the site. Are you aware of the new design plan for the town center, sir?
I'm not familiar, I'm not formally familiar with those plans.
Okay.
I'm aware of the, I'm aware of the plant, but I have not reviewed them, how it would impact this this concept here.
Oh, I think the access on on East Street is going to be changed to some degree. So that may be a concern as far as accessing and out of the complex, but um I think you should probably try to get a hold of that design and look at it, see if it complicates matters for you, access in and out. And just to just to have an idea, you know, what's what's planned in the very near future for that particular East Street, Main Street, Pleasant Street, the redesign. So that's that's coming. That's supposedly coming and in the works right now. So my other, only other concern is was the question of whether they are condos or rentals and whether you're going to maybe move that business up from the back to the front. For whoever is renting that space or owning that space may want that that Main Street, East Street area for advertising purposes and for commercial space, drawing people into it. So and that's it for the most part. Those were my major concerns and you have addressed some of them already. So with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fattalia. To be honest with you, I've thought of, thought about this right from the beginning and everyone has hit upon my thoughts. The I'm not cool about the building out in the back just for traffic going back and forth to, we don't know what kind of office space is going to be. Someone's going to go there seven o'clock in the morning and leave at five o'clock at night. That's fine. But if it's something that people are going back and forth, back and forth, you're going to have that traffic in front of those four units. In that way, you won't, the parking will be in the front of the building where they can easily access it, the people in those units. But anyways, that's where I stand, similar to the other three members. Anything else you'd like to offer? Hello?
Sorry. So this is the hearing the feedback with the commercial office in the front rather than in the back. This is the other scheme that the applicant developed showing again the, so essentially the same four unit building that we looked at previously and then a sixteen foot wide commercial office space here.
Yep.
So the scheme as has been described and we've looked at is this would be a one story office space that would be designed and built to look like a front porch almost and then the four units behind it. So would have that residential feel that would fit in with the the town center overlay district, the goal of the town center overlay district. And it does sound like this would be the the scheme that the board would most like to see going forward.
All right, board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Also what that does, Mr. Chair, that opens up more space for snow storage. Also gives a green space, a bit of a green space for those back units. So I do think this fits better in that area, specifically as you stated with any type of traffic of coming and going.
Very good. Thank you. Is that it?
I have nothing else to add unless the board has any more questions for us or any feedback.
Sure. Mr. Mr. Johnson, any questions?
All set. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fattalia.
So I'm Mr. Chairman, I guess my one concern would be people going to the commercial establishment establishment have to park in the very rear of the property in order to walk all the way down to get in. Is that correct? Right? That way you have it? There'll be no parking right at the commercial building, right?
Correct. The commercial, anyone working at the the office commercial space would be parking in the rear and then walking to their to the office.
I'm worried more about people that are visiting the office space have to park in the back and walk all the way down versus allowing some space between the residential and commercial with parking in the, you know, between them maybe or or maybe look at that aspect as well.
So that, the way you're describing that, this, the office would be a standalone building as it was in the previous concept.
Yeah.
And then they.
And move the entire residential down somewhat.
Any response to that?
I do understand.
I'm not hearing you.
I'm sorry. So this is the, this is Dennis, the applicant representative. I understand, if I understand correctly, it would be the the commercial retail building in the front. And then another building that our four unit residential building behind that with parking here in between.
Well, I would just think that may, that may be an accessibility issue for people going to the to the commercial establishment, whatever is going to be there and not having to walk the entire, you know, four units plus to get to the, you know, commercial building. And separating them to some degree.
Right, it'd be separating the retail or the commercial from the residential.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I mean, and again, maybe it is, it might be a little reconfiguring or then maybe it'll be an issue, but really the way I looked at it was it's literally flip flopping what you had on the site.
Right.
Like literally just one idiot and bring it around to the front. I know you can't draw five spaces across the pocket lot, obviously. You'll have to redo how the spaces are lined up. But really, the idea in my head was basically you're flipping, you're basically flip flopping what you have. Because you want, at least to me, I neither want the commercial traffic driving through the entire site, no matter where the commercial building was. I didn't want them to have to go in and out all the way to the back because the commercial building was there. But I also wouldn't want them to drive all the way through the site just to walk back out to the front. Walk back out to the car to have everybody going all the way through the site. The idea of being to really separate the two as much as possible in terms of traffic, because you don't have the space to move people around on the site any other way because you're coming straight in and out like that. You know, this isn't an off the side issue. So the parking, I would think, would come up to the front. You know, literally just flipping the design over on itself.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Fattalia.
Yeah, all set, Mr. Chairman. That was exactly what I was trying to propose.
Yep. I, that's what Mr. Fattalia or Mr. Johnson has explained is why thought, my theory also, my thought. That parking behind the residential, I mean, front of the residential behind the commercial. That way it's adequate, it's where you need it. Visitors can drive right in that are going to the residential pull in before they get to the residential units and likewise people visiting the commercial would pull in the same spot. You can designate how you want to, but I imagine you want to occupy, save some of those spaces for definitively residential or definitively commercial, but that's down the road. But I would think that's the best plan too. So if you understand that for our perspective, would you be coming back to see us soon or what what kind of timeframe do you think you need?
We'll be back to you relatively soon. We'll have to work on that revised layout. And then we have to take the next steps as far as the other requirements, stormwater, utilities and grading.
Okay.
But we would like to, we'd like to be back as soon as possible.
All right. So at this juncture, we couldn't put you on the agenda, right?
No, yeah, we still have to notify, get the certified borders, those notify butters, the legal notice. There are some things that we have to get in order on our end.
Good. All right. Very good. Well, good luck. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda, twenty one thirty one Main Street, material storage and discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I was told John Feneros was attending tonight's meeting. I don't know if he's on that phone call.
Okay. All right. That's fine. Do we have a time?
What do you mean?
For our next meeting, for that.
It would just go under administrative items.
Okay.
Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I did just get an email from John Feneros and he is the calling number, I believe.
Yes, I'm online on the phone.
Okay. Go right ahead.
I'm sorry, just clicked on. Did you guys ask that question?
Who's on the phone?
I'm John Feneros, BTGOG.
Right. Did you have something you wanted to add to the change?
I might have missed something. I clicked all.
Are you here? Okay, are you talking relative to twenty one thirty one? Or thirty East Street?
He clicked on twenty one thirty one. Twenty one thirty one, they want a status update, is that the?
We understand.
Mr. Chairman, he was asked to come for twenty one thirty one to report the status of the materials piled.
Go right ahead. You have the, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Thanks. Thanks, board members. So the the site guy that we hired to to do, to start the site might have done a couple of days of work and then we were told by the building department that the Oak Street Way, the abandoned street on the property still wasn't abandoned. So we basically had to stop put everything on hold until with the land court, we finally got a judgment in the last thirty days from land court that it's been abandoned. So now Attorney David Plunkett is going to take that information from land court and bring it to the building department to satisfy the issue, I guess. And then we can move forward, we'll probably resume starting construction.
Very good.
So it was, it was a four or five month snag because of the court system and the the building department still felt that the abandoned street existed through the property and we had to go to the land court to get it wiped out.
So is Mr. Plunkett, does Mr. Plunkett want to talk to us now?
Mr. Chairman, actually, I'm here on another matter, but I can verify the fact that we have gone through land court. We've noticed all the butters. We have a judgment through stipulation of agreement of all interested parties in which the right of way has been abandoned and the court has issued an order incorporating the terms of our stipulation of agreement. So that that is set to record and we can forward it to the building department.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Plunkett?
As I said, I didn't expect to be here on this matter, but so give you an up to date.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, David. Mr. Plunkett, Mr. Johnson, it looked like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chip. I thought, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm just a little confused too. We got off to kind of a rough start on this one, but the reason we had this in, I thought was because we were concerned about all the stuff that was on the site, not what's holding up the project that will go on the site. Isn't that right?
Yes.
So what we want an answer to is why are all the stuff on the site, not what's holding up the project? Because there's a lot of stuff all over the site that wasn't there and is there now and just continues to sit there. And I think that was what we were actually asking for an answer for.
I know that there's. Yeah, the pile, the pile of dirt. Is that what you were asking?
Yes.
And tires.
I believe that was, I believe he just brought in some, I can get a exact. I can ask the site guy, what was that? What did you bring in? But I know he had started the project and maybe spent two days there and and then this whole thing with the permit came up. So I don't know the answer of what is it? I know that I've seen it, but I can ask him what it, what is it and what was it needed for?
How long has that material been there? And and are you going to be using that material in the construction?
I believe he brought, I did, yes, I do believe he brought it there to use it on that site. So.
Well, that's something we could have, should have been told before. Board members, any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything in regards to twenty one thirty one, but I do have a question for Mr. Feneros. I don't know if it's appropriate while we have him on, I just wanted to get a status on one of his other projects. So I don't know if it's appropriate to do during this while we still have him or make him come back for another meeting in regards to another parcel. So I'll leave that your call. I'm just trying to save him.
I, I understand that. Are you talking about north and?
Absolutely.
Well, you have a quick question for him?
Yeah, you know, I mean, hey, has he been on site lately? The site, I understand it is, it's under construction, but the site is a mess. I've had a couple complaints about the site and the trash just being debris just being kind of piled around and moved and moved. And also I was questioning what is the status with the parcel, the home on the corner lot? There's now a Winnebago Park there. It looks like somebody's living in the Winnebago. So I'm.
Yeah, I believe that occupant, the, yeah, the occupant has gotten served. Yeah, I believe that occupant, the, yeah, the occupant has gotten served, um, a thirty day notice for possession. So we're still in the process of trying to, um, people are still living in the two homes, the one on the corner and the one next door. So.
Okay. What is the status of the? Yep. What's the status of the demo?
To the tenant.
Okay.
The demo, they're, they're, they're there now. I think the garage came down last week. The service station came down.
Yes, it did. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have a meeting there tomorrow afternoon. Yeah, I can provide for an update. I'm, I'm meeting the, the contractor tomorrow afternoon on site.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for stepping out of, uh, line.
No, that's all right. Very good, Eric.
And I'll get back to you guys for the next meeting or, or whatever. I can email you as to what the, um, what the, what the dirt is on two-one-three-one Main Street.
Okay. And you'll make sure that they clean up that site as they're demoing on North and End of a Street, right?
Yep.
We have your assurance of that, right?
Meeting there tomorrow.
Okay. Tell them the bad guys on the planning board want it cleaned up.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I had a comment if I could before we.
Yes, go right ahead.
So my just, my question to Mr. Feneros is, uh, when is we expect to start on Ma- on Main Street? And, um, you know, I know you're meeting with the gentleman. I mean, is that, is that a start date or, or we, do we have an actual start date?
Uh, 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 no, I don't have a start date in mind, but I'm thinking we're already beginning of March. But within the next sixty days, we'll be starting.
Okay. We did a lot of work there to get that process, uh, resolved and completed and, and gave waivers and so forth. So I hate to see it just sit there because there is an eyesore for the town just having that dirt there. So anything you can do to make it look better would be appreciated.
Yep, I will.
Okay, thank you.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. So twenty-one thirty-one, um, so, you know, we could be all set with that, right? For now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and if, um, John Feneros wants to, um, I'll relay messages to the board if he, um, you know, provides that update.
Okay.
That he spoke about.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before I finish, uh, Mr. Feneros also regarding, uh, North Street. I mean, you know how long that process took. So if you could work with, with, uh, you know, as far as the, um, being aware of the neighbors that live up there and, and keeping the site, you know, not in disrepair. I mean, I know it's a work in progress, but it's a long time. Uh, people have to see it and drive by it. If you live near there, it, it, it is an eyesore up there as well. So please, please, uh, before we have to start taking action to, uh, to get it cleaned and maintained, uh, do your due diligence if you would. Thank you.
Yeah, I will.
We all set? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item five, Robbie Terrace Way, uh, continued from, uh, twelve twenty-one, bond release as build acceptance.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Kuko here representing the applicant, um, I sent in a packet that, um, uh, let's see, uh, sent in a packet, uh, this week in which we had answered the questions, uh, posed by the DPW. Uh, first, let me go a bit on to say is that, um, we're very, very close, uh, we believe with, um, engineering and DPW. Uh, we didn't get a final letter yet today, but the stuff was submitted to them, oh, maybe late Wednesday. So, um, but we thought we'd come on because it's been a while and bring you guys at least up to speed. And hopefully at the next meeting will be a very quick turnaround. But, uh, in my response letter to, uh, Ms. McGinty on, um, dated January fourth, I, I answered each of those questions. I can go through them real quickly with you if you'd like, uh, save us from, to do it later on.
Unless, unless, no, I'm sure we've all reviewed it.
Okay.
Any questions on the review letter from Mr. Kuko?
No, I'm sure, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ryder also?
All set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fratelli?
Yeah, all set. Just waiting for, uh, engineering to resolve it and, uh, and get their blessing. That's all.
Very good. Thank you. Have to you, Mr. Kuko.
Yeah, so we, uh, you know, um, we've been in contact with them, uh, outside of just having the correspondence. Matter of fact, uh, we were very fortunate that there was a, um, quick thaw to get rid of about two feet of snow. So that, uh, 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 Mr. Burley from the, from the engineering department went out there and looked at the site and he was able to see it in what we would like to think of as a natural condition. So, uh, so we were fortunate to have that little bit of a thaw because we thought we were going to have to wait. But, uh, in any event, I think we're, we're, um, pretty close to, uh, finalizing this and look forward to, uh, seeing you at the next meeting with the final approval letter from, uh, uh, DPW Engineering.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kuko. Um, is two weeks all right for you?
Perfect.
Mrs. McGinty, you're seven oh five all right for Mr. Kuko?
So, um, it'll go on at seven o'clock just under administrative items.
Okay, all right.
That'll be number five. So, um, have Ms. Ladder updated for that.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Very good. Have a good evening. Next item on the agenda, um, it was Sunny Slope, twenty-four Sunny Slope. That's continued until the twenty-fifth of, uh, January. Do we have a time on that, Mrs. McGinty? Or is it on, uh, in the sheet already?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, it's on, um, administrative item and it will be at seven o'clock.
Okay.
So that's on the agenda for, uh, the next two weeks.
Yep, I see that now. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, one thousand and nine Livingston Street, concept plan review. Mr. Hanley, how are you?
Not too bad, uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman. Uh, thanks for having us. Happy New Year. And, uh, kind of walked through, uh, uh, we had a couple of things. So, um, one thousand nine Livingston Street, this is an OSRD subdivision that we initially brought, uh, in for the preliminary review in July. Um, three additional lots, um, we're, we're attempting to salvage these existing residences. Um, we met with you on July thirteenth. We had a preliminary IDR on November twentieth and we're back in front of you, uh, trying to try to get some further directions so we can kind of get our arms wrapped around this and submit for, uh, for permits. Uh, essentially what we've been doing since the IDR is going back and forth with, uh, DPW and attempting to make sure that all of our, uh, uh, comments relative to fire, uh, are, are addressed. Um, this morning, uh, we're fortunate enough to receive an email from, uh, fire department. It essentially says that the, uh, design of the proposed intersection is sufficient for access for the designed vehicle. So I think that's, uh, that's one thing that we have, we have done. Um, DPW, uh, has, uh, remains concerned with, with site distance. And this is something I want some, um, I'm hoping to get some direction from the planning board. I submitted to you, uh, two plans, a plan dated November twenty-fourth and a second plan dated November twenty, November third. I'm going to, uh, share my screen here, uh, if I could and okay, this is kind of a site and I'm getting it to my plane. Um, this plan dated November twenty-fourth is in a package. And basically from, um, from the twentieth where we had the IDR, uh, to the twenty-fourth, we got some comments back during that. Mostly DPW stuff, mostly minor stuff that we're able to address relatively easy, easily. Um, the change on this plan relative to what you saw in July is essentially this intersection that pushed up the road to the west uphill approximately thirty feet. That was to incre- uh, increase site distance from the proposed intersection to Livingston Street right here. Um, this plan requires no waivers and it provides two hundred feet of, uh, site distance from the proposed intersection. Um, we thought this was a good plan. We submitted it to, uh, to DPW. Um, they were good enough to have a, a telephone conversation with, uh, the telemeeting on the first of December. Um, in, in, in essence, what they've asked for is us to, um, uh, review the design of this intersection to increase the site distance to allow for two hundred feet if we measure it at the property intersection. So if you see here, I have a, I have a line with an arrow in it and that might be four feet over, uh, the, uh, the side yard sideline. And if I use that sideline, I have a two hundred foot approach. So I satisfy, uh, Ashdo's minimum statement. Um, when we talked to DPW, they said, well, we want to see that line measured more similar to, to this red line here, uh, which goes right over the property corner. Uh, when we did that, we're limited to about a hundred and sixty-five feet. So not being aware of any specific regulation that requires that. And having been involved in a couple of projects in the past where we weren't able to do that, uh, but still were able to move forward with the project because we were looking over the side yard of the butter to get our two hundred feet. We thought we had some ability to kind of massage this design a little bit to increase it to maximum length. So that's what we did. So on December third, we submitted this plan here. Again, um, what this plan required or resulted in was us shifting the roadway up further, just about as far as we can up, uh, along the, uh, uh, the, the frontage of the existing house. Um, to maximize the site distance that we had. So if you look at how this changed here, uh, right now, what we have is you can see my, my line, which has the arrows on it. And if I measure that, how DPW capacity measures it, um, I've got a hundred and ninety-six feet. Um, which from our opinion is very close to the two hundred feet. Feel like it satisfies, uh, the, the, uh, standard that's required. Um, importantly though, the actual site distance here is actually two hundred and thirty-eight feet. So we don't limit ourselves just to this one point. What we actually have here, ten feet from the sideline is a hundred, uh, two hundred and thirty-eight feet. So we significantly increased the available, the actual, uh, site distance at the intersection by making this change. But this change came at a cost. Um, to, to increase this, uh, we're, we're requesting consideration for a waiver to section eight point one-nine. And what eight point one-nine says is the need is minimum centerline radius of a hundred and fifty feet. We have a minimum centerline radius of a hundred feet. So we had to tighten up this first curve that comes in off of Livingston Street. And we also had to eliminate the tangent section. So that same section requires one hundred feet in between reverse curve. I can't do that. I can't provide that, uh, and increase the site distance as we're showing. Um, so, uh, that's kind of the, the, the crux of where we're at right now. So we took this plan, we submitted it to, uh, DPW. Uh, they still have concerns specific to the site distance and the waiver requests. Um, and at that point I thought it might be prudent to bring the plan in front of the board, have, try to have a discussion about how we move this thing forward. Um, I, on, on our side of the, of the project here, we do have an excessive two hundred feet of the site distance. Granted, we look over the first three feet plus or minus of the, of the side yard. Um, and I'm not aware of any specific regulation, either in the subdivision regulations or DPW's regulations themselves, that specify how to make that one. And we've done it in the past, right? So I have kind of the, these three things that I'm trying to balance. Um, and, uh, and, and I figured it would be appropriate to come to the board and try to get direction on those, those things. So basically the direction I'm looking for is, is there a local regulation? Um, and then the second question would be, um, what plan does the board prefer? Is it the November plan, which satisfies exactly at the two hundred feet looking over the butters, uh, property? Uh, or is it the December plan, which requires a waiver? Um, but we're able to increase that, uh, actual site distance to two hundred and thirty. Um, so with that being said, I'll try to answer any questions and hopefully I can get some direction.
Uh, just one thing, Mr. Chairman, um, I want to chime in with is that even though the, um, we're asking for a waiver on that radius, uh, there are many projects in town. Uh, I'll give example of any condominium project where we have roadways that service hundreds of vehicles a day that have less than a hundred foot radius. It's, it's a safe, uh, radius. It meets the requirement, uh, you know, so especially when we're only talking about three houses down in there. So, uh, we can do the project without it. It makes the project a little better. It actually enhances, uh, the driveway access on lot one is a little bit of a, a side, uh, a side benefit. But, um, it's, uh, you know, it's not a roadway that's going to have an awful lot of traffic on it. And I, I don't think that this would be a waiver that, uh, would be, uh, in any way detrimental. Uh, and, and as Jim said, our focus was with the emergency vehicles to make sure that they could get in and out of there. And we wanted to make sure that we had that, uh, so that we could come forward with you guys so that you're equipped with all the information that, that we're able to put forth, uh, so that we can finalize this. The other issue that you look at when Jim has that drawing up there is what's a little unique to the site is that the pavement in Livingston Street is nowhere near in the center of the road. It's, it's almost, uh, uh, you know, it, it's going to be basically touching our sidewalk. Uh, and we have to actually build the sidewalk on some of our land, which we will be giving an easement to. Uh, where normally your pavement is, uh, somewhat centered in the right of way so that the, uh, the sidewalk would be at least in the right of way. So we're not intending to not build the sidewalk, but, um, what we, what we would do is we would grant an easement. And we've also fallen, following, uh, along with what the practice is, uh, we're providing a sidewalk, uh, across the, uh, the other side of, uh, the opening so that in, entire, the entire frontage of our property is covered with sidewalk. We request a waiver and, and pay the fee for the sidewalk on the northerly side. But, uh, we're going to continue to sidewalk on both sides of the new roadway in anticipation of sometime in the future, uh, as the sidewalks get expanded, at least that, that section will be in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuko. Mr. Hanley, you all set for now?
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate what, uh, Mr. Kuko said though. So that, that's kind of critical and I didn't, I should have touched on it. But where I drew that blue, uh, circle, um, normally if a roadway is built in the center of the forty foot right of way of eight feet between the edge of pavement and the actual right of way line, I have eight tenths of one foot, right? So Livingston Street was probably, uh, cow trail or whatever they call it, two hundred years ago. And they kind of fitted in the best they could, right? Um, so, so that's really the result of this is that because of the geometry of the existing roadway and, uh, you know, the design of what we're trying to achieve here, we have less ability to achieve the site distance measured out of the DPW request. Um, and if it were the eight feet, um, we, we would have that looking over just our project. Uh, because it's so close to our side of the, of the road, um, that, that's part of the challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. Um, board members, Mr. Ryder? This is right up your alley.
Oh, yes. Uh, I'll, I'll be honest, you know, um, thank you for, uh, both designs, um, Jim. You know, from a perspective of, um, what the project looks like, um, the November twenty-fourth looks better. It's, you know, um, but I understand where, uh, DPW is coming from on, you know, the line of sight. And as you stated, majority of these roadways were car paths, uh, that were ultimately paved and whatever the layout is, uh, they threw some pavement down and that was the roadway. So I understand you're working with, uh, you know, some old, uh, road layouts, you know? Ideally, um, I think it's something that looking at the December third, um, turn, have you, um, I'm just concerned that is a, a tough turn coming in. Um, from say east street side, um, for any apparatus, emergency vehicles, making that turn and then turning, you know, the double turn back to back there. Um, you know, coming in from, uh, the opposite direction, um, from either, uh, you know, I, I think it's a much smoother transition, but I'll be honest, you know, you, you're not off by much, um, what, four feet when you go with, uh, the December 3rd, uh, iteration. And, and did you get anything back from DPW on the December 3rd?
Yeah, no, I, I thought I had mentioned that they, they, um, were concerned that we still didn't meet the site distance. And they didn't, um,
Okay.
Yeah, they, they were, they were still concerned that we didn't meet the site. And that's what kind of led me to say, well, you know, we, we've kind of kicked this around now for a few months. Um, and I, and I totally get like, you know, the, the reasoning behind it, but I thought it would be prudent to just get it back in front of the board and have a discussion with you guys.
I think one of their closing remarks though, and that was that they wanted to see what the fire department had to say.
Correct.
Yeah, and
We just got today.
And the, the second part of the fire department letter was that, uh, you know, should, if we, uh, we have the 20 foot radius, uh, he said, you know, I'm tired, if, if we have to go to the 25 foot radius, uh, we can still achieve that. So, uh, you know, if it turns out that when they actually get out there before we put the sidewalk and everything in, we'll invite them out there and if they want that to go to 25, uh, that we can accommodate that.
Okay. I, I think the 25 foot radius is going to help there, Dick.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I, in, meet the site, luckily, um, I feel much more comfortable with the December 3rd, uh, proposal. Uh, the site look is good. You, you cut a little bit of, uh, the driveway off on the, uh, existing lots. I think, um, overall it makes, uh, a bit safer coming into that, uh, proposal development.
Yeah, and it, it actually helps, um, with the access to that lot one. So, uh, you know, it's given that the waivers, we don't think are anything that is, uh, you know, onerous. Um, uh, we're hoping that, uh, the board feels the same way.
Okay. I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, Mr. Ryder.
Mr. Chairman, just in terms of the issue of waivers, I think, you know, if I could just interject that, you know, it's important to bring out the power to grant waivers is there for a reason. It's to look at the specific site that's before the board and make a determination whether it makes sense or not. So the situation where we're dealing with issues that show the ability to have a safe, uh, build out of the site with some, you know, de minimis type of technical waiver. Uh, you know, th- that's something that, you know, should be, uh, part of the process that allows it to happen. And again, there's a reason why waivers are there, why the power to grant waivers, waivers are there. Because, you know, when, there's, there's not a bright line determination of between, okay, at this point it's safe. And then one inch over, it's unsafe. It's a, it's a concept that has been, uh, made a determination for the purpose of safety. But if, if we can show that that safety issue has been addressed, then, you know, waivers as requested necessarily to carry out the, the purpose, you know, I, I, I think is, is viable and, uh, warranted in this situation like this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Plunkett. Appreciate that. Um, board members, Mr. Fratalla. Mr. Fratalla. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, from my, I mean, yeah, to me, I, I'm fine with either way, but it, it seems like, and, you know, I might be reading it wrong, but the second version addresses what DP, well, pretty much addresses what DPW, DPW's R is his biggest concern. If that's the case, and that's what's generating the, the need for a waiver, then I think this kind of goes back to what we tried to say, I think, in the past, which is show us you can build the project without the waiver. And then if you need to do one that makes it, you need a waiver because it makes the project a little bit better, or in this case, you know, some town request, then that seems reasonable to, to, to grant the waiver. That's really the difference between making the project work a little bit better, but yet it needs a waiver, than one that works not quite as well and doesn't. It, it, you know, that just seems to be the most easy way to decide that you should go ahead and use, you know, the opportunity to, to grant the waiver. I mean, some of the projects come in and they start off with the waivers from day one. We deal with it. That's fine. But this one, obviously that wasn't the intent. It comes about because they got a request to try and address an issue. You know, I mean, obviously Livingston Street is tough, but, I mean, you'd be just as concerned, you know, if a car's coming driveway on all the street, all the, all the, uh, houses on Livingston, the way Livingston is, I don't see this as being much different. They, you know, we're only coming out one at a time anyways. So, so, I mean, I think the design too seems to address the concern, you know, that, that was raised the most. So I'm fine with it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Fratalla.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I actually concur with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Ryder. I think, um, um, safety is an issue that I want to, wanted to address. And I think the December 3rd design, uh, does make sense. It does give, um, a little more site distance. Uh, I've been to the site. I pulled out of the old driveway, um, and it was tight, but this design will makes a lot more sense than the other one. So, um, I concur. I don't have a problem issuing the waiver if, if in fact we do need it going down the road. So, um, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Hanley, uh, does this solve all your problems?
Yeah, well, I, I think you've given us good direction. You've, you've, uh, indicated which one is a probable and I, I think, yeah, I think it does. I mean, Dick, unless I'm missing something that you'd like to mention, but I think this gives us the direction we're looking for.
Well, we wanted to take the temperature of the board and make sure that, um, everybody was, uh, on board, uh, and then, you know, we're, we're ready to go to final here, so, um, we should be submitting shortly. Thank you.
You know, you noticed I didn't give you my opinion. My, my opinion is we have three members of the board that concur. I'm not going to throw a wrench in it, but I do concur anyways.
Uh, thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Hanley, is there anything else?
No, that's it for me tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. So you'll let us know when you want to get on the agenda?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, uh, move the design forward and we'll be in touch with Diana to kind of schedule a submission maybe two, three weeks out. And we'll probably be finding you, I guess, toward the end of February.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Mr. Kuko, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Hanley, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Plunkett, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Jack, that was the quietest that I've ever seen you.
Wherever you've been, you're not working? You're not doing any details?
No, no.
How are you feeling?
Fine, fine, fine. Very good.
Well.
I'm a grandpa 12 times, so.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Yeah, thanks for everything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, next item on the agenda was 913 East Street, uh, that is being continued. Um, till what date, Diana?
So, Mr. Chairman, it's, they're asking to continue to January 25th. And, um, the next available slot on the agenda is 7:05.
Okay, very good.
Make a motion to continue this hearing till 7:05 on January 25th?
Wait a second.
Second.
On the motion, on favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
The ayes have it. Mr. Fratalla.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 181 Pine Street, Landplex. Uh, applicant request continuation till January 25th, 2021. Um, board members, have any comments on this?
Nope.
Nope.
Mr. Ryder, no?
No.
Mr. Ri, Mr. Fratalla.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's just a comment, um. Are we going to be seeing plans for, for this project or what? Have we, this has been going on and on and on for a while. Uh, I just want to see if we can get this, it's been a month since it was continued on 12/21 and they want to go to the 25th of January. So just in an effort to, um, you know, um, find some resolution, uh, can we make sure they're, are ready for the 25th? Or, or, or take them off the agenda or, or whatever, so.
Well, I don't disagree with that. Mr. Johnson, you had a comment?
The, the only thing I'd add is maybe we could just try to reach out to them so that we know in advance, as they did this time, if they're looking to continue, not, not one of those night of ones, you know what I mean? Just, you know, because I think those are the most distracting when we have them on the agenda and we find out day of that they're not coming in. I mean, if it happens, it happens. There's nothing we can do about it. But, I mean, I don't mind. I mean, we've done it for other projects and I, in this case with so much of the holiday in the, in the interim, I don't mind giving a little bit of leeway. I mean, we kind of sent them out of here the last time with the potential of going in about three different directions. Um, so if it's going to take them a little bit of time to work on it, I don't necessarily, again, with the holidays having fallen in the middle, I don't mind so much that we do it, but I, I do like knowing as far in, in advance, if we're not going to be dealing with it, I mean, we, you know, the only way to take them off the agenda is to basically kill it, which, I mean, I don't think that's, that's really where we want to go unless we're asked to do that, or it gets out of hand how long it's been on the agenda.
Um, well, that's a good point. I would have thought that based on the, when we received the, when we gave, I'm sorry, when we gave in the information or request to, uh, why don't you try to bring this in off of Whipple Road? And gee, that seemed pretty good. It seemed like a plan would work, it would, uh, make sense, wouldn't have the problem on Pine Street that we did. Um, but that seemed to fall apart. I'd just like to know, instead of saying, you know, two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, what are you doing? Are you going to commit with the plan from Whipple Road or from Pine Street or, or, um, what you're, you know? We have no idea. I was hoping Mr. Plunkett was here for that. When I, when he said he had something else here, but I didn't know it was the Sullivan property. Um, I don't know. I'd almost like to say if we, we haven't continued this yet, if we had a motion to continue, but if they're not ready to, to come in on the 25th, we might be ready to take a vote.
Well, I'm fine with making a motion to continue this to, I assume, 7:10 on 1:25. And then request that, um, if you can, if you just notify the applicant that, I guess in that case, one way or the other, we'd like to see them here. And they could come in and tell us they're not ready, but tell us why and what their intent is going forward. Um, you know, it could be five minutes. It, it doesn't have to be, you know, a two hour meeting. If we're not going anywhere, but I mean, at least that way they know that if they don't come in on the 21st with at least some sort of advisory that, you know, that we could end up taking action. Does that seem fair?
That seems fair. At least an update.
Yep.
So then that's my motion.
Very good. Wait a second.
Second.
On the motion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Fratalla.
Aye, yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, thank you. Um, next in item on the agenda is 464, 468 Main Street. Engineering LLC Group One Realty Toyota.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my name is Neil Sander. I'm with Independent Engineering. Uh, we were here last month discussing proposed signage for the new Ira Toyota of Deuceberry. Uh, at that time, we were proposing seven new signs, including four signs on the building and three directional signs and requesting waivers for the area of the directional signs. This board provided a lot of valuable comments on that application and in discussing with the client, we've revised our application to reflect those, uh, the board's concerns. If I may share my screen?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, um, as you can see, uh, we are
We haven't muted yet.
Oh, you haven't?
There you go.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm glad you're seeing this and not the hockey stats up on my other screen. Uh, but, uh, we are proposing to remove one of the proposed directional signs, uh, number six, which is on the west side of the property driveway.
Right.
Uh, and in addition, we are going to add a red stripe to the remaining directional sign, uh, directing traffic from Route 38 into the site. Uh, I know there was some concern about not having any sort of identification that this is Toyota facility on the directional sign. Um, without going as far as adding a logo of the word Toyota, which would bring this out of the realm of directional signage. Uh, we figured we would add a stripe that indicates it basically consistent with the branding of the site. Uh, so we're going from seven proposed signs to six proposed signs. Uh, the area of each proposed sign would remain the same. And we will be, uh, recommend, or will be requesting that one of the directional signs be facing tra, oncoming traffic from, uh, westbound Route 38 so that people on the road can come into the site and know where the driveway is.
Okay. Does everything else stay the same?
Yes.
All right. Good. Board members, um, Mr. Fratalla.
Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Sander, thank you very much for the renderings. They, uh, exactly what I was looking for as far as, um, a little picture of the building and findings up there. Uh, you know, very similar to what we have at, um, at 150 Main Street, which is your competitor, the Honda dealership down there. So, so thank you for that. Um, uh, I'm not really too happy with, uh, your failure to bring those signs, number five and eight onto this, onto the lot rather than being on, on Main Street. Um, again, they had directional signs and I don't think this was needed on the, on the, on the Route 38, uh, road, so.
Well, uh, sign number eight is actually the existing Tylon sign. Uh, we're not proposing to change that at all. Sign number five is actually set back approximately 40 feet from the right of way line, which would be about 50 feet from the, uh, edge of the cartway. Uh, so it's not like they're right there up against the, the new sidewalk. Um, they are set back from the right of way, but we do want to make sure that people who are coming toward the site know where the driveway is and they can see the sign that says service and, uh, sales to the right into the driveway.
Do you think people are not going to know where to go when they come in the building and in the driveway?
Uh,
And, and those are
You never know.
Right.
You never know. Um, I mean, we're, we agree that having that second directional sign is redundant and unnecessary. Uh, but we do want to make sure that they know, uh, where that driveway is and where they can go for sales and service.
Okay. Uh, so this, those signs are bigger than required, correct?
Correct.
Do you need a waiver for those?
Yes.
I'll, I'll say, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fratalla. Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I, I'll have to agree, um, uh, I read the, uh, minutes from the last meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but I'll have to agree with Mr. Fratalla. Um, wouldn't you think that, you know, once somebody, the sign being, uh, eight that's staying there, somebody driving either direction on, uh, Route 38 is going to pull into that main driveway? Um, wouldn't seven, the sign number seven be sufficient for that and not need that number five sign? Uh, as soon as you enter in the driveway, um, if, if seven, when you pull in, you, you ultimately, by the time you pull into the lot, you're looking directly at number seven. The only time you're going to see sign number five, if you're looking at that, is when you're stopped and taking a left-hand turn into the driveway. Somebody that's taking a right-hand turn into the driveway And taking a left-hand turn into the driveway. Somebody that's taking a right-hand turn into the driveway. Is ultimately coming in for the Toyota dealership once on the lot. Is that's when they're gonna want to see whether they go to sales or service. So I think five is redundant. I think seven handles what you're looking for. And eliminating six was great. I think if you eliminated five, keeping eight and seven. From my opinion, handles everything you want to do once somebody gets onto your site.
Okay, well, our concern is that because the existing pylon sign number eight is set so far east of that driveway. By the time somebody in eastbound traffic sees it, they pass the driveway. Uh, I mean, this, it is a directional sign, but it's it's eleven square feet. Uh, you know, it's gonna be visible for traffic coming eastbound toward the site. Uh, the last thing we want is to have somebody, you know, see, oh, there's Toyota, let me slam on the brakes and turn left. Uh, because the only sign they see is that Toyota pylon.
Well, I I will tell you, I drive that road seventy-five times a week and, uh. People know it's there. I don't think there's gonna be any issue of missing the driveways, especially if somebody's coming in for, uh. Either sales or service, um, you know, you're gonna look for your driveway once you approach that large Toyota sign. You're gonna slow down whether you're taking a left onto the property or you're turning right into the property. Uh, my opinion, I think, uh, sign number five, um, you know, is a little, uh, excessive. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
You're welcome, Mr. Ryder. Um. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I appreciate that you let me go second to last, uh, for the following reason. I was, I was prepared to not want to be the problem and would have simply gone along. If everybody else was fine, but I still have the same problem, which is the two, the same problem with Mr. Ryder, Mr. Fatale just discussed, which is. I don't understand it. If it doesn't have Toyota or anything on it, if the concern is that people won't find the driveway because they don't see the giant sun. Because it's a little farther away. The service and sales of what is exactly going to make them turn into that driveway? The only reason they'd be turning into a driveway looking for sales and service with Toyota. Is because that's what they're doing already. That sale, the sales and service sign in no way tells them that it's Toyota. So. Uh, you know, I understand the internal ones out on the road, I mean, inside the site, they want to move people around on. A site that does this kind of business. That makes complete sense to me. But a a sign that's not advertising the business and simply says the words sales and service. Out on thirty-eight just doesn't make any sense to me, just adding the red stripe. I don't see how that alleviates the concern that the petitioner mentioned, which is. That without the sales and service sign, people looking for Toyota sales and service are gonna miss it. Because they didn't see the big sign yet. I I don't, I guess I just don't see that as being a good reason to have a sign that doesn't otherwise tell you. Who's serv- sales and service you're turning into. That could be sales and service of anything. If you didn't already know you're coming to Toyota.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm fine with, I mean, you know, again, I want to be a good, you know, host. To a good business. That makes complete sense to me and I'm all for. You know, going a little above and beyond to give them more than what would normally be be allowed for signage. At a business, which I think we're doing with the other, you know. How many we got? One, two, three, four, five, six signs, you know, even if you lose this one. So to me, I just, I just don't get it because I just feel like on thirty-eight. If it's not telling you something about the business. I don't know what the sales and service sign does out there other than say sales and service. And nothing else. Like, I just don't, I don't get it. And to me, I feel like it's it's not, it's not helping. With how it looks out front and I don't even know that it really does what they want it to do, which is. Direct people to sales and service because I feel like even if they take that turn. The only sign that's truly gonna tell them what to do next is that internal sign, as Mr. Ryder pointed out, number seven. Which is saying, come down here if you want service, hang a right if you want sales. So I just don't see number seven, not, I'm trying number five as necessary. So, but otherwise, I'm fine with everything else. Um, and I'm all set, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments on the the last three comments? From the, uh, board members? Mr. Sanders?
Oh, but. Um, understandably, you know, our, my my client wants to make the entrance to this site as visible as possible. Um, you know, with the existing pylon sign where it is and two driveways on the site, one of which is inaccessible because, uh, it's chained off. Uh, we want to direct people into that main entrance as simply as possible. If this is what, uh, the approval of this application hinges on, I'm authorized to eliminate that directional sign.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I make one other comment that I I apologize and I forgot to make?
Go right ahead, Mr. Johnson.
And I'm not saying they're gonna ask this and I'm not saying whether or not, I'm not advising it or anything else, but if it were to come up. That that the number eight sign, if they were to request. Moving that sign. Closer to the driveway, as long as it's not gonna screw up anybody's spotlight or anything like that. I would have no problem doing whatever it is which is required to make that okay in terms of waivers and whatever. If that helps your business with how it's seen and all that, that's fine. I would be. More than, more than happy to try to make the accommodations for that. If that is something you wanted or, you know, your client wanted.
Okay.
Even if it came down, whether it was part of this or it was something that came in. You know, down the road, if that's a decision they made, I'd have no problem entertaining that as even as an extension of have. Had this hearing sometime down the road, if that's how they feel, if they feel like, you know. Gee, we have had people kind of shoot by the entrance and we'd really love to have our real sign a little closer too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I I'd say now, I mean, I can't guarantee that, you know, I'll be here when you, when you come to ask it. But if you, if I, if I am, I'd have no problem with it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay.
Thank you. Um, Sandra, my one question is, uh, the front of the building.
Yes.
It's really, the front of the building is really a large sign. It's all white. It's all white, it's illuminated.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Has anybody, I know it hasn't been on recently, but has anybody complained about that? Uh, that much white? And another was other, other, is there anybody across the street that is now has this white light? Shining in their window?
Uh, well, the sign itself is red.
Yeah, well, I know that. Oh, I know that, yeah.
Uh, you concerned about the elimination from the showroom itself?
Yes.
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, because all those blocks, you know, I don't know, I didn't count them, but, you know, the fifty blocks, let's say, they're all white.
Yes.
My question, can maybe, can that in the evening be reduced once the, and I don't mean shut it off. Could you, uh, control the brightness? At a certain time, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, when you close? I don't mean shut it off either.
Yeah, yeah.
Doos it.
I I can't say yes or no.
Okay.
Just because I don't know.
Uh, yeah.
Not because I can't commit to it. I I just don't know the answer.
Yeah. Have you seen that when you drive by?
No, I don't think I've ever been at by the site at night.
Okay.
Several times during the day.
How are you going home tonight?
How am I going home tonight? I live three miles away from my office, uh, but.
All right, and and I'm not even sure if it's on now because I noticed a month ago that it was on and I said, wow, that's pretty bright. And some people have talked to me about it too. That's a pretty bright sign they have. That's not a sign, that's the building.
Yeah. Um, I I mean, certainly they don't want to waste any more money on energy than they have to.
Right.
So it it may just be because it's, you know, it's still in the construction phase there that they were leaving some lights on. Uh, I can certainly find out and get you an answer.
Okay, I I'd appreciate that because I know you can, they can reduce signs, um, you know, regular signs out in the street. Um, at different times of the evening. So if that's possible, if they think that's a doable factor and if they can understand my my question. I I would like that. That's it. So. What's your timeframe, Mr. Sanders?
Um, we're ready to order signs as soon as we get authorization from this board.
All right, do you have to come back? Do you want to come back with anything or no?
Uh, no, I mean, we're willing to agree to eliminate that directional sign.
Okay, so you're all set, but it's been discussed today.
Yes, and if we can add that caveat that, you know, we have the discretion to move the pylon sign at some point in the future, that would be even better.
Is that right?
Well, well.
Mrs. McGinty, you have that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't think we can tell them now, we could tell them that if if the rest of the board, if you want to pull them, wouldn't have an, even requesting, but. Until we saw where it was going, we can't just blanketly say.
No.
Pylon signs, yeah. So, I mean, I I'm fine with committing at least in terms of as a polling issue. That barring it being in the wrong, you know, in a problematic place or anything like that, I would not be against it. And I presume the other board members would be okay with that, but I guess you'd have to, you know, go around to make sure they're all right with it, but I don't think we can put it in the motion.
Um. I think what we've given them the okay to, we agree with bringing it back. They could come back with it.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, yeah, that's not really in the cards at this time.
No.
But it could be in the future.
Okay, very good.
But, Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question and then Mr. McGinty clarify for me? If we make it a, um, if we were to put in the motion that we would. If they came in, you know, for a request to move the sign, you know, that pylon sign. That we we've at least considered looking at it as a non substantial change of this?
Absolutely.
Is that, is that all right?
That's all right with me. Board members?
I I'm okay with that.
Mr. Mr. Fatale?
I'm okay, yeah.
Very good. There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
And since Miss McGinty's already off mute, maybe she can answer this follow-up question because this will be the next one that comes up. As a result of them removing that sign, uh, that directional sign at the front. Which, if any of these waivers are changed and no longer necessary?
Um, so yes, Mr. Johnson, sorry, just grabbing my sheet paper. Um, all of them are still applicable, um, because they still will have one directional sign, that's number seven, I believe. Um, that will be applicable.
Okay.
So they still need that for a waiver for section. Um. Five two 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 dot J, um, should be exceeding the four square feet, yeah.
Okay, so the four that are listed here will still be the waivers we need to deal with in a second.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, in that case, Mr. Chairman, I make them, oh, I'm sorry, you're gonna do the audience, my fault, nevermind.
That's all right. Um, Brian, is there anybody in the audience? Anybody on the phone?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman, but as normal, we are about thirty seconds behind.
Okay, we'll give you thirty-one seconds.
Thinking in, uh.
We're all set.
Alex Trebek, having had his last show, Ed, I mean, I do Japanese music while we wait.
No, 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 we're all set. Brian, we're all set?
Yeah, still no callers, Mr. Chairman, we're all set.
Very good, thank you very much.
Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it. Very good. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Pow, uh, Mr. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fatale?
Aye.
Give a sigh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to grant the following waivers.
For a red head?
Section fifty, uh, fifty-two twenty-two J. Section fifty-two thirty-two A. Section fifty-two thirty-four and section fifty-two fifty-two A. Um, as requested by the applicant.
That's the form of motion, Mr. Mr. Johnson?
It is.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fatale?
Aye.
Give a sigh. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the signed special permit. Um. As requested with the. Removal, as discussed this evening, of the number, um, as they listed number five sign. Uh, and the previous removal of the number six sign shown on the submission from the petitioner. Uh, which, so we're allowing what they designated signs, one, two, three, four, seven and eight. Um, as approval. And in addition, that the board recognizes that it would consider as a non substantial change, should the petitioner wish to come in with it. Um, the potential moving of the number eight sign, uh, their main sign out on thirty-eight.
Um, Mr. Sanders, are those, that motion? Coincide with your, uh, what you feel has happened here this evening?
Yes, yeah.
Very good, okay. All right, on the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, was there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Thank you, Don.
I was waiting for that, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah. Um, I'm trying to get down to a hockey game. On TV, um. Uh, on the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fatale?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for your indulgence, thank you.
All right.
Next item on the agenda, old business? Any old business from anybody?
No, Mr. Chair.
No business, uh, new business?
I don't have any. Well, new business was part of, uh, North Street at Inover Street, but that was handled while we had the applicant on the phone.
Right.
Um.
Uh, yes, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to round back out with my, um, the town players report. On the suggested calendar modification and I didn't. I just want some feedback from the board if they do want to change anything, uh, with the suggestion. Um, or change up the calendar a bit, just so we can space out the meetings.
I thought you and I discussed something in our, at the office the other day?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, you and I had discussed the December meeting of.
Yes.
Uh, for twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Um. It's currently scheduled as the twentieth, which is very close to the holiday.
Right.
Um, so the suggested one here is the thirteenth.
Yep.
Um, and we would still have one meeting in December. And then my other two suggesting suggestions are for March. Um, and those are just to space out the calendar.
That's fine, that's fine with me. Anybody have any concerns?
No, the dates look fine for me, Mr. Chairman, I'm okay.
Mr. Ryder?
No, everything looks fine.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
It says here.
Want a motion to approve?
A motion to make those three changes as discussed.
Second.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mr. Fatale?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Give a sigh. Thank you.
Chairman, I have another comment for new business if I could.
Go right ahead.
So, um, so the board is informed, um, Tuxbury Habitat Build has, um. Signed an agreement and, uh, most of understanding with Soldier On. To develop the property down on Main Street. And to, um, uh, go ahead and, uh, purchase the property on South Street. Uh, that is in the works. Uh, I had discussed that I thought the. Soldier On people, once they have their, um, concept plant in formation and in works that they come in front of the planning board. Give us an opinion. They are not sure which, uh, which way they are going to go, whether they go a friendly forty B or they come in front of us. Um, so that is in the works, but the plan was to, um, develop the property down on Main Street. Um, trying to reduce the size of the units. Uh, reduce the parking down there and. Provide twenty-one, I think it was, as a potential plan for, uh, affordable units for veterans housing on Main Street, so, um. Again, it's in the works, but I did present in the fact that I would like to come in front of the planning board. Also was in front of the local housing partnership and the board of selectmen to discuss this plan in detail. To, uh, make all parties aware of what is happening for the site. Um, you know, as far. You know, as far as the town is concerned and the, in the community, so that's just an update as far as, um, what is happening with that property on Main Street, so.
Very good, but thank you, Vinnie, for your work.
Mr. Chairman, just, just because it feeds off of what Mr. Fratellia just brought up, I don't think we mentioned it, but I, I think it's worth at least noting that, you know, the town did meet its, uh, affordable housing goal of ten percent. It didn't meet it very late in the game. It, it will not last long, I understand. Uh, so it'll be a short-lived victory, but I still think that, you know, with all the things going on and with the last sort of recession thing we hit in the middle of, I still think, or we're coming out of, I guess, if we're accurate, I still think it's worth noting that the town, unlike several cities and towns in Mass, was at least able to reach that goal. You know, during its, during, you know, this ten-year period. Um, and obviously, you know, our hope would be that we can work to get there a little faster than the next one, but I, I still think it was worth noting, so thought I'd bring it up.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that. With, uh, people like Vinnie helping, it makes it easy. Thank you. Well, he always reminds everybody about that, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna keep the board informed in a positive way.
Absolutely, Vinnie.
Absolutely. I like that, Vinnie. Thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
Correspondents? Anything, Mrs. McGinty?
Nope, um, those two items went with the town players report, which I was already spoke about.
Very good. With that, motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 I oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Fratellia?
Aye.
Give votes aye. And good night.
Good night.
Everybody.
Aye.
Have a good evening.
Aye.